Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Board of Commissioners, City of Bowling Green. Regular meeting, City Hall, February 18th, 2025, at 4:30 PM. We're going to begin with a invocation and pledge allegiance. And if you would, I'll start.
Dear heavenly Father, today is the day the Lord has made. Let us rejoice and be glad. Please continue to favor our city as we pray for the good health and protection of our local law enforcement personnel and firefighters that risk their daily lives to protect ours. We pray for the Kentuckians that have been devastated by the floods, and we pray for the safe return of our six firefighters and the Swift Water Response Team that deployed to eastern Kentucky. We're grateful and thankful to the Lord and pray for the good health of all of our employees that serve and work hard to provide good community service and customer service to our entire community. Please watch over and protect every employee and their families, and we pray for the continued peace and equity of all of our citizens of Bowling Green, Kentucky. And we pray for the leaders in our community to put their differences aside and put you first, as we ask for your guidance and we make our decisions for our community. In your name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Mrs. Jackson, will you please provide a roll call?
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Perigin, who is absent, Mayor Alcott.
Here. Mr. Mizel, do you have any comments at this time?
Do you, Mayor, just, first one, there will be a need for a closed session. I'd like Ashley to read the reason.
Pursuant to KARA 61-8101B, for the purpose of deliberations on the future acquisition of real property by the city, as publicity would likely affect the value of the specific piece of property to be acquired by the city.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Any discussion? None. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes.
And the only other item I have is if you wish to make public comments, please sign the register in the back of the room, back corner of the room, and we'll take those up after a regular session. That's all I have, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mizel. First item is approval minutes, regular meeting, February 4th, 2025.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Hill. No comments. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2025-36.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointments of Nicholas Brock, Trenton Goodrow, Marcus Lum, Anderson Rio Napier, and Emma Watkins to the position of Police Cadet Two in the Police Department.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
We have a great opportunity for us tonight to add to our force at police, and I'd like to ask Lori Gray, our HR manager, to come up and make the recommendation. Lori?
Evening. So it's my pleasure to be here this evening to ask for the approval of the appointment of the following: Anderson Rio Napier, Emma Watkins, Trenton Goodrow, Nicholas Brock, and Marcus Lum to the position of Police Cadet Two. They are all five here this evening, and I'll have them stand up.
Fantastic. A good-looking crew here.
So I'll start out with Anderson Rio Napier, attending Western, is attending Western Kentucky University, pursuing a bachelor's degree in criminology and a minor in psychology. He's currently a Cadet One with the Bowling Green Police Department. Emma Watkins graduated from Western Kentucky University with a bachelor's degree in forensic psychology and criminology in a minor in sociology. She is currently a Cadet One with the Bowling Green Police Department. Trenton Goodrow graduated from Emerson County High School. His most recent employment was an asset protection investigator at Walmart in Columbia, Kentucky. Nicholas Brock graduated from Western Kentucky University with a bachelor's degree in finance. His most recent employment was a distribution financial analyst for Fruit of Bloom, Inc. Marcus Lum graduated from Gathersburg High School in Gathersburg, Maryland. He served in the Air Force Reserve and was a police officer at Surf City Police Department in Hampstead, North Carolina. Please let me know if you have any questions there, or I can have them introduce their families.
Absolutely. We'll start off with Emma.
I brought with me our mom and dad, Matt and Heather Watkins.
Very nice. In here. And then we'll go to Anderson.
I have a couple of family members who are on the way, but they hit some traffic. My father Kelly and my sister Lily.
Well, they can watch it later and say hello to them, wave to them right now, so. All right. Marcus.
Sir.
Where's Marcus?
I'm here.
Do you have any family with you tonight?
I'm here by myself. My wife's holding my newborn.
So watch him, wave to them, all right? And let's go to Trenton.
I brought my mom, my dad, and my sister, and then our granddad Tyler as well.
Fantastic. And Nicholas.
I brought my grandparents' last century.
Well, we look forward to having you on the department as a cadet and ask a lot of questions. Our recommendation is to find a mentor and to find someone that can help guide you and someone that can help lead you to make good decisions, because that's what we'd like you to do for our community. And we look forward to you and pray for your future and safety, and glad your families are here, because it's important that they support you and pray for your safety and future. And without that, we're going to vote you unofficial. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes, congratulations. It's going to be a two-hour meeting, so please have a seat. Stay, no, y'all go have a nice evening, celebrate, enjoy your evening. Thank you very much.
Emma's parents drove here from Old Oak County.
Oh, really?
Her parents were from, Emma's mom gets parents were from Old Oak County.
That's really cool. All right. Municipal order number 2025-37.
Municipal order authorizing acceptance of a grant for transportation alternatives program funds and grant agreement from the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet in the amount of $107,600 for the River Drive, River View Drive Pedestrian Island Project.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
I believe we brought this to you some time ago. This is the project where we're going to put some pedestrian islands between College Street Bridge and crossing the bypass over to college, and then also crossing over at the Center Street intersection. And the state let us know that they had more money they wanted to give us, so we were like, okay, we'll take it. So we're now going to apply for the 107-600, but it requires a 20%, which would be 26,900 for a total project cost of 134,500, and would like your approval to get that. Our original amount was 75,747, but they're wanting to offer up the 107-600, so we're coming back to you, make sure it's okay, and ask for your support. Nick is here. Jake's here, I'm sorry, worked on this, can answer any of your questions. Might have.
A great project, and we'd love to have more state support, and thank you for finding this, gentlemen. Questions, comments?
I'm really excited about this project. We, the MPO, had a city officials bike ride downtown, and this is one of the places that we had to cross, and so definitely excited that we're going to improve safety, especially since we're going to be investing in our park downtown, and this will help connect pedestrians who are going to a restaurant to the park, and that they'll have that safe island in the middle to stop, because I know for myself, whenever I have, I can look one direction, make sure it's safe, go to that island in the center, and then make sure the other way is safe. I definitely can tell that that is a huge safety improvement. So thank you all for continuing to find grants to help us improve our safety for our community and connect us to incredible things like our park.
Further questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2025-38.
Municipal order authorizing the acceptance of an amended, an amended award and contract for the Kentucky Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Community Project Fund from the Kentucky Department for Local Government to build a live fire training unit in the amount of $310,022 for a total grant award of $560,022.
So moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
So item relates to another one we'll pick up on here in just a few minutes, but this is the, this is still coronavirus money that's still out there, and we were notified that, I guess, someone couldn't use theirs, and so $310,000, we would like to request and accept from the Kentucky CDBG CV funds, and would like to put this toward a fire training unit that will be on your agenda here in a few minutes to complete that project. We had already received $250,000 on another grant. This would bring the grant total up to 560, and then we've got 372 that we'd already budgeted in our FY '25 capital budget, so would like to go ahead and accept this 310, $22 and ask for your support. And Nick is here. Nick is here, isn't he? Okay. Sorry, Nick, can't see over the podium. I need a stool.
Is this, is this at Station Five?
This will be at Station Five in the training, at the training center, out behind it. And we'll, and we'll pick up that item here in just a few minutes.
Great. Further questions?
This is for the, this is just the grant money.
None? Great job, by the way. Roll call.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin. I'm so sorry, Alcott.
Municipal order number 2025-39.
Municipal order conditionally approving construction and accepting maintenance of Bale of Kentucky Family Limited Partnership Subdivision Lot 15.
So moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
As you all know, Menards has pretty much completed their, their project. It's Lot 15 in the Bale, Bale of Kentucky Family Subdivision. It's ready to be accepted. We went out and inspected back in January, found a few things, and went back in, on February 4th, Melissa's team, Public Works, and recommending acceptance. We're looking at 3,477 feet of roadway, approximately two-thirds of a mile, along with that sidewalk and stormwater, or storm sewer. There are some drainage basins out there, and they have committed to maintaining those basins, as well as any sinkholes that, that may pop up, program for those, to fix those if they were to occur. We've also got a two-year warranty on this, this acceptance. If anything were to pop up in the next two years, that was the responsibility of the developer. We would still have that option to, to go back to them. So Andy's here and can answer any of your questions on this one.
Questions at this time? None. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2025-40.
Municipal order approving construction and accepting maintenance of Sterling Business Park Subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
So Sterling Park is out Rustville Road. It's like an industrial-type cul-de-sac. We went out and inspected back in November, found a few things, did a follow-up in February. Again, Melissa and her team, and city engineer and her team, Public Works. We're looking at the acceptance of roughly three-fourths of a mile of the roadway, 3,921 linear feet, along with the sidewalk and storm sewer. There are some drainage basins in this area as well that we maintain privately, and we got the two-year warranty in place with this one as well, in case there are any issues that occur in the next two years after tonight. So Andy, again, is here, can answer any questions on this acceptance and recommend your approval.
Mr. Mizel? City is growing. Questions, comments at this time? None. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2025-41.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting a proposal from Forge Fire and Company related to a request for proposals for a new live burn facility, RFP number 202521, in an amount not to exceed $932,850.
So moved.
By Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
So this is, this is replacement of our burn facility, our burn training, live burn facility at Station Five. It is at the end of its useful life due to fire damage, and this one here, what we're looking at to purchase is on the Omni, I think it's Omnia. Let me back up. No, we went out, we went out, I'm sorry, I'm confused with another one. We went, went out for RFP, and we got three proposals, and one of them is the Forge Fire Company, and they bid 932,850. There's a picture of what we would be purchasing in your packets. It's kind of a, you know, layout like a house or a business where they can practice, and it can be set on fire for real, live training of fire, smoke, all that entails that. And we would like to use that $310,000 we just talked about, along with the 250 grant that we got, along with our own money to purchase this in the amount of 932,850, and use the Forge Fire and Company as our vendor. Deputy Chief Doug Morris is here with us tonight, as well as Battalion Chief Bean and, Battalion Chief Joe Harbin, and they can answer any of your questions on this project, but this would be back behind our new public safety training center, behind current existing Station Five on Porter Pike, in the training ground. And I think this would be very, very unique. They're also willing to bring in volunteer fire department, let them train on it as well, and, and take advantage of that as well. So Deputy Chief Morris is here, can answer any of your questions and recommend your approval.
Commissioners, questions at this time?
When you said volunteer fire departments will use it, will we be charging a fee for that?
No.
No.
Okay.
We have an agreement that we signed, I know, about three years ago, or less, or more, between that three and four, that said we would assist our volunteer firefighters in ask of their need and response. And I know that has been valuable as we have responded in our community and vice versa. They have helped us out, and we've called on them on several major fires, and they have always been there for us when we've asked, so.
When we have major fires, when we have to pull out multiple stations, they backfill our stations and stand by and cover for us, so it's, it's a good partnership.
Other questions? Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2025-42.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting the purchase of a tracker boat with live scope system through a sole source from Renegade Marine and Outdoor in the amount of $51,469.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
We, we had a really productive meeting back in November, December, back at headquarters. Battalion Chief Bean presented to us a proposal that would solve a lot of just nightmares that have happened on our river. Last year, I think we lost two lives right down between the bridges, or just up, up around Weldon Pete Park. And we, we didn't have, you know, all of the equipment that we needed. We've been reliant on other agencies to come in for rescue equipment. And so thanks to our guys, they put their heads together and came up with this idea of buying a rescue boat that has all of this sonar equipment onboard that we can dispatch very quickly. We'll have another item that we'll be bringing to you shortly that will provide search capabilities under the water for submerged victims, and we feel like this is the way we need to move, direction we need to move going forward, where we can go in immediately and, and take action. So really good proposal by our officers at BGFD. And in your packets, you'll see proposed purchase of a Renegade boat, and this has all the equipment that we would need to go in and, and take action. And we're here, can answer any of your questions. Battalion Chief Bean, Deputy Chief Morris, Battalion Chief Harbin are all here in the back, can answer questions on this equipment. And again, we'll, we'll be bringing one more piece to you once we get it ready, but for tonight, this is a water rescue recovery boat. It's a Tracker, 2025 Tracker Grizzly, purchasing it from Renegade over in Litchfield, $51,469.
Chief Morris, on the related issue, I know we have a team, our Swift Water Boat Rescue was requested, and I talked to Battalion Chief Bean, he said to, I think Richmond, Kentucky, can you give an insight or update on their?
We, we had six, six personnel. Today, we heard they were in Leslie County, Leslie County. They were trying to access a community that was completely cut off by floodwaters. We haven't heard from them since they were dispatched there earlier this afternoon, so we know, they're very happy to be there. We appreciate your support in allowing us to send, send those there. There'll be a time when we'll need to call on, on people from across the state to come and help us, so we always enjoy the opportunity to go and help when we can.
This boat, how many boats will we have after this purchase?
So this one, this one will be unique from our other boats. The other boats we have are soft, they're rubber. They're really good for catching people that are on top of the water. So most of our rescues that we make down at the river, somebody's either on the rocks, or they're hanging on to a tree, or they have a life jacket on and they're in the water. And we're very good at being able to get them, you know, right off the top of the water and into the boat, which is what our current boats are designed for. What we are not good at is when somebody actually goes under the water. That's when we have to rely on these other communities to come in and help us with sonar or with dive teams. But the problem is that takes a long time. So once they're submerged for a certain amount of time, there's really no hope for us to rescue. It's a recovery. With this boat, it's aluminum, it's hard body, it has all the equipment already mounted onto it, so in the three or four minutes that we can be dispatched and in the water, we can actually locate the victim. Once they're submerged, they don't actually go to the bottom. They'll kind of be suspended, you know, six or eight feet under. With the sonar equipment, we can actually find them, and with what we're going to be asking for at the next meeting, an underwater drone, it has an arm where we can actually grab the victim and pull them back to the surface. So we're talking in, in five or 10 minutes, we can rescue a submerged victim. We know that people can survive cold water drownings, so we're just trying to give our citizens the best chance of survival. We really hope that you'll approve this for us.
Chief.
Chief, can you talk about the visibility in that, in that body of water, how bad it is, and also the timeline or timeframe you all have when someone goes under and what we're looking at?
Sure. So we have considered a dive team for our department. The problem is that our river is not really the best place for a dive team. There's, there's no visibility under the water, lots of trees and debris. It's dangerous for our people, it's dangerous for divers to come in from out of town. So with this new equipment, we don't have to send our people underwater. We can use, we can use this new specially-designed equipment.
Chief Morris, is there anything else? It's weird that you said drone, and I was actually going to ask Bean, because I know there's like equipment out there that is for a drone to, especially if someone's submerged, if you can kind of help them out. I wrote it down, and you kind of alluded to it. Is there any other equipment that you guys need? You know, especially if someone's submerged, that we can help out with? Because you're right, you know, we were looking at like the flooding today, and I don't know if you guys had to go out there and rescue someone that was local, that, you know, was caught in the flood, but we know there's been people who have, who have passed sadly in our river. And so is there any other equipment that would be needed? Because it sounds like this is the first that you guys will have for, for it to be submerged.
This is, this is the start. At the next meeting, I'll be here to ask for $100,000 for the underwater drone. From there, I'm going to rely on our, on our team, Battalion Chief Bean, Battalion Chief Harbin, they're the subject matter experts. I can promise you, if they come to me and tell me we need equipment, then we'll be right back here asking for that. But for now, this and what we're asking for at the next meeting, we think is a, is a very good start for us.
Battalion Chief Bean, hats off to you for to see something like that, because we know that, you know, people have passed, and we know that we're building up on that riverfront, and I hope we never see anybody that passes in the river again, but we know that may not necessarily be realistic. But to have this and to be able to get there quickly to try to hopefully save a life is huge, so hats off to you guys.
Mr. Mizel, I didn't answer your, your second question there. You were talking about survivability.
Is it 40, 45?
So what, what we know is that in under an hour, it depends on water temperature and lots of other factors, but if we can, if we can bring somebody back to the surface that's been under, underwater for under an hour and the water's cold, we have a chance at, at bringing them back at resuscitation. So we're just trying to give them that best chance. Right now, we can't, we can't do that. We can't rescue somebody that's submerged in under an hour. This equipment's going to allow us to do that.
I didn't know that information. That's fascinating. Thank you all. Appreciate this. Further questions, comments? All right. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2025-43.
Municipal order approving the purchase of a portable restroom trailer for Lampkin Park in the amount of $62,500 with Safewear Inc. through Omnia Partners Cooperative Purchasing Contract.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
This is the one I thought I was talking about earlier, that we are using the cooperative purchasing agreement on this one from Omnia. This is portable restrooms, and I'll tell you backstory on this one. Brent Belcher took me out to Lampkin Park, showed me we're walking around where we thought we were going to build the tornado shelter and possibly, hopefully, the community center, and it's right next to the softball fields. And we've got an old restroom that's probably been there. Brent Childers would know how long it's been there. He, a long time. So I, I think he sold concessions out of it one time, but anyway, it needs, it needed about a $40,000 roof, and I'm like, we, we can't, we can't spend $40,000 on a roof that's something we're going to tear down. I said, so let's, I said, Brent, let's, let's go look for something else. So Brent came back, he's, he's found this structure here that's mobile. It's got restrooms, it's got everything we need in it that we can put down there and use, and until we get the tornado shelter and the, the community center built in Lampkin Park, this can be anchored down and stay there, hooked up to sewer and function just right, just what we need. And then once all that's built, we can turn around and move this to another construction site where we need it and reuse it again, or we can use it for other purposes. So we, we think this is a, a better use of our money, instead of throwing away $40,000 for a roof on a 60, 60-year-old building. We think this is the better way to go for just a little bit more 62.5 and use it over and over and over again. So thank you, Brent, for finding this and bringing this to us, and we recommend your all's approval. It's through Omnia Purchasing Agreement. It's already out there at the lowest cost we can get it, and just need your approval. Brent can answer any more questions on it, on this one.
Fine. Questions at this time? None. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2025-44.
Municipal order authorizing change order number two to the contract with Scott and Ritter, Inc. for demolition and sinkhole repair services in the amount of $200,000 for a total project cost of $385,286.58.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
So as you all know, we've had our sheriff sinkholes this year, this fiscal year. We just got our second one fixed out on Single Tree. Everything is good. We, we even dug up the road. Everything is good, we we even dug up the road, everything is good under the road now. It's a a really good permanent fix uh on Single Tree, but we have had to spend additional money. Luckily, we did get the hundred thousand dollar grant, last meeting we approved that. But this is to increase our uh PO with uh Scott and Ritter that does all of our uh sinkhole and demolition work. Uh, we are over budget and need uh to also increase the uh purchase orders. So we are in, we're asking you for this additional money. Uh, Andy is here can answer any of your question, questions on this one, but um this would get us uh where we need to be.
Mr. Mizel? Questions at this time? None, roll call please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes, municipal order number twenty twenty-five dash forty-five.
Municipal order approving procurement of professional services for fiscal year twenty twenty-five corridor identification and development program application, step one planning work. And further approving execution of a contract for services among and between HDR Engineering Inc., the City of Bowling Green and Warren County Fiscal Court.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Bean Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
So uh, at the end of last month, January, we met, uh, we had our all-day uh strategic planning session uh with with you all. And on that agenda was uh the idea of of applying for um a corridor for the Amtrak Passenger Rail Service. Uh, thanks to Mr. Bobby Raybold here. Uh, he has made some uh, some some uh giant leaps, I think, forward on this this uh possibility. Reaching out to the um FRA, Federal Railroad Association, uh making some contacts there. And also um making contact with this HDR Engineering Inc. uh firm, which we are bringing to you tonight. Uh, we talked about making, taking the first step and the first step to getting our foot in the door uh for a corridor. Uh, which would be between uh here in Louisville and uh would be the first step. And then we would try to get between here and Nashville. First step is to get um assistance with this firm and uh to to put in an application. There'll be a second round of applications that the Federal Railroad Administration will put out. And uh the first round was uh, there were sixty-nine corridors awarded, we talked about that at our meeting. And of those sixty-nine, uh this firm that we are proposing uh to hire, HDR Engineering, was successful. Uh, was the the firm used by seventeen of those, so seventeen of the sixty-nine uh this firm, HDR Engineering, uh was working on. So we feel very confident in their ability. Uh, this would be a partnership with Warren County um and um a joint, joint partnership to go after uh this corridor. And um just take this step one, this step one is is hiring HDR as our consultant. Uh, they would help us uh prepare that application uh with the FRA uh for a corridor and uh kind of get get in the mix, get get our foot in the door. So Mr. Raybold here uh can hopefully answer any more questions you all have thought of since since our all-day meeting uh down at the ballpark. So uh recommending your approval to move forward. And I think um we're looking at a cost of our portion around sixty-five thousand, I believe.
It's a hundred and thirty-five thousand between counties.
Okay, sixty-seven, sixty-five, sixty-seven.
Uh, Mr. Raybold, first of all, thank you, grateful, just anyone knows he's doing this out of the goodness of his heart. Being a great citizen has always been, family's contributed a lot to our community and goes back deep history. Um, but your your vision and your fortitude is appreciated. And you know, we're grateful to have citizens to be part of our our community, nonprofits part of our community. We recognize that as a city, that's what makes us successful. And that's um, this would be an endeavor I think we're all excited about and that we're grateful that you're heading, heading this charge for us. Thank you.
Commissioners?
Likewise, Mr. Raybold, I think that this is going to establish something big for Bowling Green. We're establishing back something that ended, was it nineteen seventy-nine or nineteen? Seventy-nine, so when we got rid of the old LNN uh train and I know that's before, it was CSX, they didn't take over at that time, did they?
Last Amtrak service is Bowling Green.
Was seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine, forty-six years ago, so if we don't uh take this step now, it might be another forty-six years, so.
Well, I hope we don't do that because I I see and I thank you for like everything that you're doing and trying to re-establish something that we used to have. Because I feel like that is going to create a boom for Bowling Green. It's not just going to, it's going to be tourism, it could be jobs, it could be uh the arts, everything that we see and everything that we're trying to build for the future could actually help out. So this is something that's going to be huge. I don't think that um we're ever going to get an airport, I don't. But I do think that having a train depot here will be huge because it can take people to airports. Or it can hopefully one day take them all the way to Orlando or one day out, take them all the way to Chicago, maybe from Chicago get to somewhere else. So I think this is going to be something that's going to be huge where you can even look out while you're on the train. I was on a, my wife and I went from Cincinnati to Chicago once, many years ago, and we're going to pick up a car. And we went from the Cincinnati, Ohio Train Depot all the way to Chicago and it, we didn't have the cellphones as as we have today. And I wish I would have had a camera. So that train is also not something that's going to be transportation, but I think it could show you some of America that you don't necessarily get to see. And you get to take pictures of some of that America or get to see it. So I think that's going to be huge and it's going to be something great for Bowling Green. Um, so thank you for that.
Well, thank you, you know, riding the train is an experience and so there's a lot, lot to uh to enjoy.
I also just want to thank you, uh, we're really excited about this as we've been talking about, um, you know, is it possible to get a a train uh stop here in Bowling Green? Um, our staff had sent out a survey to our community this summer and I mean, that social media post just blew up. I got a ton of emails, a ton of texts. I'd really, since becoming a city commissioner, I hadn't had anything that had such a huge positive response in terms of people excited about the potential of being able to connect um Bowling Green to Nashville and Louisville and um, you know, the nation through uh re-establishing a train service. So I know our community is going to be really excited to hear that we are getting closer to potentially being able to reconnect um with a passenger train service. And so just thank you for taking this on and uh looking forward to an update. If you want to uh give us, share just to put here that the uh microphone, just because I know our community is excited and they're going to want to be able to hear what you're saying.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for voting tonight. It's 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 a new day for Bowling Green when it comes to transportation. This is the first step of several, it's going to take several years for this to take place. But I have all the confidence in the world that by working together with the county that we're going to make this happen. And having had multiple conversations with the Federal Railroad Administration myself, I can tell you they're excited about Bowling Green and and the idea of a corridor that connects us to the north and to the south. So the corridor that we will apply for will connect us to Nashville, like Jeff said, to the south, but we're going to connect to Cincinnati as well. So Louisville, Cincinnati, Nashville, from those cities, we can go anywhere. And so uh it's an exciting time and I I want to publicly say that uh, you know, Doug Gorman gave me the opportunity to work on this project. And if it hadn't been Doug giving me permission to to work on it, then we wouldn't be here today. So I want to include that uh, you know, in my comments. So thank you very much and look forward to working with you further on this project over the years to come.
Okay, any further ado, roll call please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes, ordinance number BG twenty twenty-five dash two, first reading non-binding.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment, ordinance approving amendment number two to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky annual operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
So this is only uh February and this is only our budget amendment number two, so we're doing pretty good. Hadn't had to make that many changes, but in your packet is uh number two and you'll see a lot of donations that we've amended for. Uh, several grants uh also in here are the um the partial year for the firefighters that we hired that we ended up not getting the SAFER grant for, but that's okay. We did get a big three-point-eight million dollar grant for the stormwater project on Chestnut from Fourth Street to the bypass, so that's in here. And uh many, many other odds and ends, uh donations and cleanups with with the different funds, uh transferring money uh to and from, so uh it's all in here. Katie can answer any of your questions you might have on this one. Uh, it's even got the three-ten that we voted on tonight uh from the coronavirus money, CDB, Kentucky, CDBG CV. And um just need your approval. Katie can answer any of your questions uh that you have in this amendment.
Thank you Katie, thank you Mr. Mizel, questions at this time? None, roll call please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Uh, as we're checking for, uh, see if there's any comments, I wanted to mention our county. Our county has an initiative, it's called What Would BG Be? And it's actually whatwouldBGbe.com. And I had the privilege, a job I've never done, to deliver newspapers yesterday. So they gave me four huge bags of papers and uh it was incredible, um, be able to take papers and throw them at houses. So I was littering, littering, in Bowling Green yesterday. But it was a a fun job and a paper went out and it had our daily news as part of that, our, I know Western Kentucky and our high schoolers um and our surrounding community participated in that. And it, so you woke up to say a paper what it would be like in twenty-five years from now. And really, the goal is to ask the community to participate in, you know, visioning what you think are important issues for our community. Uh, we all, as commissioners, have run on several of those and we've talked to our community, but this is important information, just like as we accomplished the housing study. Um, it was shared with our county and and we all gleaned that information. So um I encourage our community to participate because it's going to be out in the next month. And I I know we have some members in our community that are, have been leaders in that effort. But gleaning that information is critical to us equally. All right, uh, we are going to go to closed session at this time, thank you everybody.